My name is Keith McIntyre, pastor of the Independent Baptist Church of Monizuma, and just appreciate the work of Park Without Reverse and their ability to connect people with government. And I believe that Christians need to be connected with government and be aware of what's taking place. We've come alongside them to help for a couple of months to get the town council and board meetings out. But would like to invite you, if you don't have a church home, to the Independent Baptist Church in Monizuma. Our services are Sunday morning at 10:30. We have adult Bible classes and children's classes at 9:30. If we could ever do anything for you, you can contact me at MIB.church. Thanks for watching.
Okay, we'll call the meeting order. Department head comments. Commissioner Mace. A few things going on. The Highway Department still coming together, and I think things will seem to be calming down there as some of it go along. We have worked, I met with Work One three or four times, trying to get a CDL program. We've got about five or six guys who would like to get a CDL. There is a program that will pay for CDL through Work One, but no one here seems to be real knowledgeable about how that works. So I will contact them again tomorrow. I did get a call from the lady who's in charge of it, and they just don't feel as much urgency. But there is some urgency in our parks, and we're going to need truck drivers to come. It's snowplow time. If the county requests that from the Work One project, we have to pay out upfront the cost, but then we give reimbursement by the state. Once they complete, they will have an obligation then to stay with the county for whatever length of time they come up with. Typically, it's six months, but it could be up two years. We'll just have to work that out with them and see how that works. If they fail to stay that long a time, then they have to pay some appropriate portion left back. But there'll be no cost to the county on those CDL programs. They just moved the Iron Bridge down off Mansfield Road down by Bridgestone to use in the Trails Project. After the bridge was gone, and there are abutment stones there, and I contacted Mark Davis, who's in charge of the Trails and column excavating, to make sure they know that those stones will not leave the county. And we had a couple of surrounding counties move one and some of those stones for projects there, but we're not letting those stones get away. So I delivered a letter this morning to column, just to make it easier for him. If he gets requests of some county wants a stone or two, he can show them the letter from the commissioner that says none of those stones are leaving the county. The Trails will use those as needed to reset that bridge when they get it reassembled, and that'll be coming up here in the next few months. They met with the Bridgestone Roads as far as traffic during the Bridge Festival, and they had some suggestions offered, but I think they made the decision to stay as they were. That seemed to work very well last year. We're going to do traffic counts again. The CBC will pay for traffic counts again in the Bridgestone area and all over the county to try to get an idea of where the most traffic is going through, and if there's anything we need to suggest to anyone or the Highway Department about how to take care of that. 775, the Highway Department's been working very hard on that. That's one of the community crossings, roads that's going to be paved. I think it's going to be paved on the 20th. So Luke and the Highway Department's been working hard to replace failing culverts there. I think there were seven altogether, and he said some of those culverts had been dated in the books they have in 1905, and so about 100 years old some of those culverts are. And I'm glad to see that happen, because typically what has happened in the past, we'll go ahead and put down the pavement road, and then an old car will fail, and we have to cut through that brand-new road. So I'm glad to see he's getting all that done beforehand and ditching it along the way. So get a chance to drive that road before they pave it. It's a pretty amazing contrast. Tim Yocum from Vermaian County. Julie Landzone and I were on a panel discussion with Rural Health Symposium in Indianapolis, I mean, in Terre Haute just a week or so ago. We're the only such entity in the state where two counties are sharing service, even though we know ours has a sunset time on it. It's just, they're thrilled to see the counties are operating this way, that it's doing a good thing. In fact, I just had a conversation with Julie again yesterday. I know Roy's got some information from her, because they're going to need some funding to pay the fees to the collection company. The collection company's doing a great job. Julie really anticipated next year becoming self-sufficient, which she thinks they may reach that. They're about $200,000 ahead of where they expected to be. So she's thinking that they may actually be self-sufficient this year. There is no county at this opposing. They were just amazed, because they all asked, "How much do we have to put into our funds?" And some of them were paying $1 million for their ambulance service. And when I told them, I think the number was in $50,000 by then, or $59,000, I think is what the number was. But even when it was $200,000, they were amazed by that. But the prospect that it would pay for itself, just amazed of the county. So when the commissioners long before me set this up to operate as a standalone entity for the county, that was a good move by those guys, and maybe Lady involved the time then too. It was a good decision, a good choice. Other than that, there was a struggle still with the Highway Department and the office, but I think that's in the process of being remedied. If we put a deadline on how one of those relationships had to change and work had to be done, and I think it's happening, so I think we're going to be okay there, but I don't know that for sure. I just, in my gut, feel that. And I think that's all I have. You got something for me?
Okay. Thank you. Hamilton's there.
I have to go cook, so I'm going to leave, unless you have something you think I need to stay around for.
Okay. I don't think so.
All right.
I don't have any.
Take your jacket. Come on in.
Ah, yeah. Thanks.
Sheriff?
We just bought two Tahos, one from the budget, one from commissary. The second one's not quite in yet, but rather than trade-in three vehicles, we didn't think we'd get as much money as selling them outright, so we got permission from the commissioners to sell them outright. So we put them on the auction website. Tahoe, we sold for $5,500. An Explorer, 2019 Explorer that doesn't run, we sold for $1,300, which I was kind of impressed with that amount. And then we're still going to sell 2014 Ford Taurus, which we traded one of those in before. We only got a couple thousand dollars on the trade-in, so hopefully we can sell for more than that. Also, we're hiring two deputies. We had 13 applicants. We're down to six for the background investigation and interview process. Eddie's cards retired in November, so that's a second deputy opening.
Okay. Thank you. Mary Alice?
Nothing, still scanning. Not scanning, but yeah. Anyway, we're doing the documents and validating them and getting them done. Right now, we're without computers, but guys there work on.
Okay. Thank you.
We appreciate all the new accomplishments we have.
Good. Lee?
Yeah, Jim touched on some things like 775. We look for milestones to start September 16th to 20th and have range. We have replaced several culverts. We spent a lot of time down there doing the ditching, just so that the final product could be its best, and like I said, not going back and replacing culverts later, kind of end up. About CDL driver, we have two applicants, one in particular interest. So that's good. In my time, I've had like one CDL applicant all summer, so these two sitting on the desk deep is promising. About chip and seal, we still have not began chip and seal, and I wanted to give an explanation why, because typically the Highway Department would have already either started it or finished that program for the season. We had some equipment problems with clear resolve that issue, but what we've also ran into is the plan that was already in place, type of stone being used is not passing. We submitted a core sample, and so that really needs to be really re-looked at. To correct that and at least get a Martin Rogue done in the season because of a previous make, promise to residents, that's become really important. To get proper stone for that would be a number 11 stone for that road itself. The increase in price would be $6,181.50. I'd like to ask the council for that amount of money to get the proper stone and get at least that chip and seal road for the year. And then next year, we would move forward with the list, just right where we left off from a previous superintendent's plan.
Well, the funding's in there for you to chip and seal, so if you change your plan, then the money's still there. So I don't know that it requires any...
Yeah, I don't know that we need to take any action. I mean, the money's there, so you spend it as you see fit. It's in the, yeah, because we don't necessarily get into decisions about, you know, what road or how you do it. That's your, that's your realm, not ours, so.
Yeah, I went and tried lightly in my first year.
And that's fine. I mean, you know, it's gotten lighter, and so that's, yeah, I think we're fine with that. Yeah, just proceed ahead as you see fit.
Yeah, and maybe we get some good weather. We need 60 degrees and rising for this application. We hope to be able to move on to a second road at some time of year, because we just don't know.
Right, right. Well, I mean, you're first time through it, so it's probably be best to try one and see. I mean, in my opinion, in the past, sometimes they've gotten too much by two minutes on the road once they oiled it, and then it just, you know, it just seems like we wasted a lot. Now, I know nothing about it, but that was just from me outside looking in. But yeah, that's fine with us.
And then as far as the equipment, maybe we'll have a conversation later just about equipment that's not operable. We've had to borrow from another county, and maybe we can get set up for success. I look at the new equipment for next year, but I don't think that maybe is the conversation for today.
Right, no, not for today. I mean, it's something, of course, we're going to adopt the budget today, but I mean, you just have to look and, you know, I don't know. There's a truck, Gus. We did put a truck in there.
No, I think so.
I mean, you know, what you're going to need to do is probably sit down with Roy, and then maybe you don't need another dump truck, and maybe you want to reallocate that money that was maybe going for a dump truck. We've been kind of in the mode to buy a water truck every year, every other year.
Every other or so, roughly.
So you may want to think about, you know, doing something with that money rather than buying a dump truck. I mean, I certainly don't know what your needs are, so it's something for you to look at. Okay.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Kim?
Okay. Tax sale is Monday. We started out July 1st with over 200, and now we're down to 77.
77. And they can redeem them right up and almost till the day of the tax sale.
Friday at 3:00.
Pardon me?
Tomorrow, Friday at 3:00.
Friday at 3:00 is the deadline, I think. Okay, good deal. Okay. Public comments? Okay, we'll move on. I see, when do you want to do the budget later? Do you want to do that when we get down to the budget, I assume, or do you want to do it now?
Well, we'll do it with that. We need to have the open and close of public hearing on the lit ordinance at some point to keep that in mind.
Okay.
We can move through the normal business stuff, and then a new business, deal with the budget and everything.
Okay.
Resolution, it's a whole nine yards.
Okay, all right. So no public comments. We have approval amendments from prior meetings. You have three different sets there, June, July, and August.
Motion to approve the amendments as presented.
I'll take it. Most have been made, executive approved amendments, all in favor. opposed. So we have additional appropriations.
This is still the joint one, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple things to say about that. I emailed them myself on August 29th, asking for information, that we have asked for, regarding this project and the appropriation thereof. I have not received a response to that. I asked for how many of the 53 locations that were the original ones that they proposed to submit a grant for were awarded. I asked from, therefore, after that, those that were awarded, how many other passings, which is part of the payout process, and then how many of these have been completed. I have received no answer to that inquiry. I also, yesterday, talked with Tim Yocum in Vermaian, as I had saw that they had had some issues themselves, and they are basically in the same boat. They cannot get any answers out of them. They also had made a commitment to them. Now, they have paid their part of it, they invoice, but we have not. Cindy has tried to get answers from them. They don't answer her, they haven't answered me. I won't vote to approve that additional until we get an answer to that. I don't know how much more I can do. I mean, I guess I could drive to Terre Haute sometime and knock on the door, but I'm not, I don't, it's not my place to have to. I don't care if they get their money or not, to be honest with you, but I'm not doing it until they answer the questions, because the way we, and the commissioners, and them, all three bodies agreed, was that they would be paid a dollar amount per passing. And they signed that, we all agreed to that. Until you can tell us how many passings you've done, I don't know how much you actually do.
So we don't really know what they've done.
I have no idea what they've done, Kim.
If anything.
But they're having the same problem in Vermaian. They've asked the same questions, and they can't get any answers out of them.
No answers, no much.
So we can table that again, or we can just deny it and send it back to them. I don't care, but I mean...
Well, let's give them a little more time. I don't know, we can just table it. I do not support paying them without some sort of documentation. We just don't hand out money without documentation of what they've accomplished.
They ought to know that.
Well, I would think so. I would think they would want their money. I would think they would want their money. I mean, we're, all, it shouldn't be that difficult to provide some sort of documentation of what residences have been, where they put their cable in.
And I'm not even asking where. I'm just asking the number.
I would just move that we table it again until they get further information.
Fair enough. I'll second that.
All right. Motion made, executive, to table the American Rescue Plan Road Grant match. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, so then we have some other...
Reappropriation.
Oh, we've got some other additionals. No, we don't.
No, that's it.
That's it. All right, so then we move on. Reappropriations.
These are upfront things that are expenses that were for the Vermaian County EMS program that has since been repaid by Vermaian County.
So we spent our own money in there, we're recouping it.
Well, yeah, more at last. I mean, this is all, obviously, as everybody knows, this is in its own dedicated home rule fund, so there's no dollars, no local dollars that go into that. It basically went into negative until we got the money, and then now that, we're asking that that gets appropriated back to those lines so that things keep going. So, or Julie, as I'm not asking for anything.
So you just need a motion then to reappropriate. Yeah, I would move, except for reappropriation, amount of $40,937.67.
I'll second. Motion been made, seconded, all in favor?
We go to a signee now.
Well, let's put them all in the pile, because we've got lots of stuff to sign.
Transfers. Several in there.
Julie sent a bunch over, and then I went through, and there were some accounts that were in the red, and I'm trying to get it cleared up before I leave.
There will be a group of additionals that Julie will have for us next month, too, that will address some other dealing with things like we're dealing with in these transfers.
Does anybody have any particular questions?
I'll move to approve the transfers presented.
Second. Motion been made, seconded, to approve the transfers, all in favor?
Aye.
Pay the jury.
Make motion for jury.
Second. Motion been made, seconded, pay the jury, all in favor?
Aye.
Monthly reports, we have your cash flow statements submitted just by the auditor, it's in your packet. Okay, moving on. Redevelopment commission.
Redevelopment did not meet. The latest update on possibly closing on the bank building would be by the end of this month, but there are still problems in other property transfers. We're just sitting here waiting. Everything with our end is good, and everything with their end in our property is good. But there's other properties involved in this shell, or this, it's not shell game, it's just a bunch of transferring of properties around, but there's problems with some other ones that are slowing this up. So we wait.
Okay. Courthouse security did not meet.
Plan commission did not meet. I'm sure you all were aware of the issues we've had with planning, Cassie, or Cassie's passing. Beth Martin's been filling in, been doing a super job. Cassie had brought her in before, done some part-time clerical, I think, and then as Cassie's problem evolved, why Beth came in. But Beth's been a super job, and I think we're probably going to be at least as good. So sliding the direction.
Good. Solid waste?
Did not meet.
Talkaway Day is this Saturday, I believe.
Eight to 12, or something like that. Third round, so.
Okay, so we want to do the public hearing on the lit first, or what do you want to do?
That's fine.
Okay, so there's a proposal to modify the lit rates that we have. The overall rate will stay the same, it's merely just shuffling the rates a bit. So anyone there who wish to comment on that, why, now is the time. I take it there were no public comments, so.
Heard none.
Okay, so you want to go ahead and we'll just deal with that then?
With the budget?
Or with, you wanted to do, it's a drawn lit, let's just do it.
We can't adopt it.
Oh.
Oh, can't adopt it, that's just the hearing.
Just the hearing. Gotcha. All right, yeah, going with the budget.
All right, so as is customary, the county council will write a letter discussing the budget and things that have gone on this year, and so I will read that with the audience and for the viewers of the video. So here it goes. Park County Council wishes to provide an update on the review and the adoption of the county budget for 2025. Park County Council remains committed to being diligent with the taxpayers' dollars. We continuously look at spending levels, trying to make prudent decisions to efficiently operate the county government while maintaining and improving the needed services to the county's taxpayers. We remain committed to keeping the tax burden as low as possible to enable taxpayers to keep as much of their hard-earned dollars as possible, knowing that we all have limited means with which to operate. In 2024, the story continues to be inflation and the tight workforce conditions. County government continues to work through increased costs of goods and services in this inflationary environment. From fuel to equipment, asphalt to office supplies, the costs of these items continue to go up and put strains on limited resources. Department heads have worked hard to find opportunities to keep costs under control, and we are confident that everyone will continue to do so. Employee attraction and retention continues to be a challenge, not only in county government, but in the business sector overall. This budget takes another step to address this situation in salaries paid to the dedicated county employees. During the 2023 legislative session, the legislature created the Health First Indiana Program, significantly increasing the amount of funding to local health departments. This program requires a number of activities by the local health departments. From this initiative, our local health department board has significantly stepped up to increase the services they provide to help improve the health of our county residents. The department has begun providing important new services to residents, and they are just getting started. The health department has partnered with Park County EMS, amongst other groups and entities, to increase the service offering. Finally, through this partnership, the health department has made significant investments in Park County EMS to further the mission to improve public health. The redevelopment commission has entered into an agreement to purchase the former Rockville National Bank building on the square in Rockville. This building has been vacant for several years now, and the RDC, in conjunction with the council, the board of commissioners, and the Rockville Town Board, felt it important to purchase this building and bring it back to use. The intended purpose for this building to become, is to become a county government annex, consolidating several scattered functions of county government under one roof. While we continue to work through the due diligence period of this agreement, we are looking forward to getting started bringing this building back to life. This project is being funded by TIF revenues from the county's two TIF districts and will not affect local property or income taxes in any way. On July 1st of this year, the county took over ambulance coverage in Vermaian County. We did not plan for this coverage to happen, and only had a couple months to work out the details. Although this was an unplanned undertaking for our county, the benefits are starting to show. The budget for Vermaian County coverage was set up in its own fund, with all expenses and revenues going through that fund to ensure no taxpayer dollars from Park County are used on Vermaian County ambulance coverage. The ability to share resources and staff between counties to decrease response times to the far edges of our county, increased practitioner levels, increased practitioner levels for our incoming mutual aid calls and backup responses, and allow both counties to provide a higher level of care with top-of-the-line equipment and supplies to our communities at no cost to our county. Staffing levels remain high with both agencies, allowing for more robust coverage during a critical incident. We intend to see benefits increase next year as this coverage moves forward. Today, the council held a public hearing regarding adjustments to local income tax rates. This adjustment will reassign the rates to shift more funding to where it can be better utilized. This change will result in no net change in a local income tax rate paid by the taxpayer. By making this change, we will free up additional funds to improve county services. In 2024, revenues to the county government have continued to increase. As a result, the council has made it a priority to return reserves to healthy levels, as well as make needed investments in county government. The increased revenues and attention to reserves will allow the council to make significant investments in this budget. Assessed values on property continue to increase, and this will result in a lower tax rate on property. There is uncertainty on what the legislature may or may not do to address property taxes, and the council remains attentive to initiatives proposed to make changes to the property tax system. Several county departments have been actively seeking grants to further local tax dollars. From emergency management to highway and everywhere in between, the employees of county government have been diligent in finding more funding sources to extend allocated dollars and make more improvements and investments in their departments. On August 15th, the council reviewed the budget request for 2025. It is important to note that many department heads came to the council with flat or lower budget requests than they currently receive. Considering the inflationary environment, this was specifically noted and appreciated by the council. After careful review and consideration, the council anticipates the following highlights in the 2025 budget. The total anticipated county budget for 2025 is $22,977,995. This is a 4.64% increase over the 2024 budget. Salaried full and part-time employees with the exception of county commissioners and county councilmen can expect a salary increase of 5%. The sheriff can expect an increase of $2,000. Hourly EMS employees can expect an increase of $1.25 per hour. Hourly highway department employees can expect an increase of $1 per hour. Hourly part-time employees can expect an increase of $0.50 per hour. This is a significant investment in our valuable employees, and accounts for a large portion of the increase in the 2025 budget. County commissioners will receive an increase of $200, and county councilors will receive an increase of $100 in 2025. The council committed to continuing an additional $2,000 bonus to sheriff's department public safety employees from the ARC fund. This funding will be included in the normal payroll cycle and is subject to approval by the board of commissioners. Revisions and expansion of a stipend system... Salaryed full and part-time employees, with the exception of county commissioners and county councilmen, can expect a salary increase of 5%. The sheriff can expect an increase of $2,000. Hourly EMS employees can expect an increase of $1.25 per hour. Hourly highway department employees can expect an increase of $1 per hour. Hourly part-time employees can expect an increase of $0.50 per hour. This is a significant investment in our valuable employees, and accounts for a large portion of the increase in the 2025 budget. County commissioners will receive an increase of $200, and county councilors will receive an increase of $100 in 2025. The council committed to continuing an additional $2,000 bonus to Sheriff's Department Public Safety Employees from the ART Fund. This funding will be included in the normal payroll cycle and is subject to approval by the Board of Commissioners. Revisions and expansion of a stipend system for county sheriff's deputies that rewards merit deputies who achieve higher levels of training and use that training to teach their fellow officers. Revisions of longevity program for merit deputies applying it annually instead of adjusting it every five years. This, coupled with the stipend system and investment in deputy salaries, is helping to better compensate these public safety professionals and bolstering recruitment. County highway funding of $6,410,390. This is over 25% of the county budget. The council continues to use funding from other sources to supplement gas tax revenues while holding a reasonable reserve in highway department funds. The county highway department continues to apply for and secure matching funds from the community crossings matching grant program, allowing them to accomplish more work on the county roadway system with less impact to local taxpayers. Several investments in equipment, including a new sheriff's department vehicle, new computer system for the jail, new ambulance, new response vehicle for the EMS director, and repairs and improvements to the Rockville Lake Park Director's house. These are all needed and necessary investments to keep these important services functioning well. Significantly increased health department funding due to the Health First Indiana Program. Health department funding is increasing by over $460,000, with a significant amount of that being returned to county funds in collaboration opportunities with the EMS department. The county share of the state funding amounts to nearly $360,000, and the county is required to match that amount with a little over $59,000 in tax levy. Funding from the Central and West Central TIF districts to support the rehabilitation and repurposing of the former Rockville National Bank building. These funds will be utilized to return this building to its former glory and create a county government annex, making this space a modern collaborative space for several county government departments. A maximum of 5% increase in county employee health insurance costs. Employee health insurance costs amount to $4,258,454, and this is over 17% of the total budget. The Board of County Commissioners are responsible for any needed adjustments to plan to maintain this 5% increase in cost. Continued utilization of user-fee supported funds to help offset the burden on tax-supported funds. County continues to maintain a cash balance in all funds, as well as a rainy day fund and other funds that are available for unforeseen circumstances. As we have seen in the recent past, it is imperative and responsible that the council continues to hold a reserve to be utilized as appropriate. Our work will continue as the budget is submitted to the state for approval. Once we receive our response from the Department of Local Government Finance and more firm revenue forecasts, we may have to make adjustments. So none of this is final until that time. The last few years, the council has worked to ensure that no services were interrupted and that continued investments were made in the county government. This was possible due to the fiscal responsibility of the council and county government employees leading up to the pandemic and the inflationary environment following it. This has also enabled the council to be prepared for any upcoming downturns or surprises that may arise. The future remains uncertain, but through the efforts of dedicated county employees, we believe we can weather this current situation and come out of it better than before. The overall fiscal condition of the county government continues to be stable, and the county council is committed to maintaining that condition. Council wishes to thank the employees of county government for their hard work, efficiency, and diligence in living within their means. Your efforts are noticed and much appreciated by the council and the taxpayers of Park County. In closing, we remain very committed to operating a county government that is responsible to taxpayers of the county and efficient in providing the services with which we are responsible in these challenging times. Sincerely, the Park County Council.
Very good. Read the letter. Yeah, I think last year if you were telling, you had the.
I had the correct, didn't I?
Yeah, it's in 14.
I made you read it.
Good.
I was wondering if that wasn't going to be the case this time, too, but.
I looked at.
I'm all right.
I looked at.
Okay, so you should have the ordinance in front of you for, in your packet, which is the budget adoption. So as I already read in the letter, what the budget would be, I also want to make a couple of comments to the members. On the front page on the tax levies, the health fund at $60,728, as well as parking rack at the same amount, and those rates at .0049, as well as reassessment at $171,030 and the rate of .0138, those will be the fixed ones. The net assessed value is the, that these were calculated to, is the one that the DLGF will use to calculate. So those will be fixed at that point, at the point of adoption here. The cumulative funds are being adopted at their actual rates, which is .032 for CCD, which will yield $396,592 to that fund. The cumulative bridge at .0329, which will yield $407,746. Those are fixed and those are known, and that's what we should, assuming that I have made some very serious errors here, what we should get approved for. Debt and the general fund are both being adopted high. The way we do our debt service here, where two-thirds of it is from debt service and one-third is from ceded for the courthouse project, I cannot adopt that straight on. The state's gateway system just doesn't allow that. So we set that high, they will bring it down to where it needs to be. It's a manual job they'll have to do. And then you said we'll adopt the general fund at $4 million with an expectation that I have, if, again, my math is correct, if I can find my paper regarding that subject, I would expect it to adopt, or be approved, excuse me, at around $3,66,498, or 24.74. Sorry, .2474. I expect the tax rate will be down about four cents from last year. It's a bit of a guess still when you start talking about debt, Andrew, but that's what I expect to be.
Because one of our projects pays off.
Yeah, we make last payment this year.
On one of them, so it'll be down to just one.
Just the last one, yeah.
And that's the courthouse.
That's the roof, not the tower. The tower will be paid for at the end of.
The tower pays off now, and then the roof pays off.
Two more to your, right?
Sounds like about the right timing.
Yeah.
Good. Any questions on all that?
So the order I'd like to do it is the budget itself, then the salary ordinance, then the resolutions that we have.
Good. Okay, so we'll start with the budget?
Okay, that's ordinance number 2024-10. And I would make the motion to approve the budget as I submitted it.
Motion been made, seconded to approve the budget, all in favor?
So then you said salary ordinance? Salary ordinance. You have the salary ordinance in your packet. Same as usual. Have the notations that lay out the individual special cases, or actually even, you know, everything I read in the letter and so on. So. There you go, that's for your consideration.
We do. That's salary ordinance 24, 2024-11.
Motion's been made, seconded to adopt the salary ordinance, all in favor?
Okay. Two resolutions. The first one is the resolution relating to longevity pay for the sheriffs.
Or they are not in your packet, I don't think, but you did send them out.
You didn't get those? Okay.
I think you did send them out, though, earlier to the council, I think.
Yeah, and I, okay, anyway, I have a copy of them, so. The first one is 2024-03. That's for longevity. That will allow for $700 per service year with Park County Sheriff's Department. It will also allow for $350 per service year for work years of service at a previous law enforcement agency. It will also grant $700 a year for full-time service in civilian role with Park County government. The sheriff and the matron are not eligible for this, and this will start January 1st of 2025. We've talked about that, we've talked about that in the budget hearings, but it's now written into the resolution to be adopted. It will replace resolutions 2022-07 and 2018-20.
And that's addressed in there that those are replacing the previous.
Last line. This resolution amends and replaces resolutions 2022-07 and 2018-20.
Now, again, the purpose of this resolution is to replace the one where they actually received that longevity amount at the end of a certain period.
Five, 10, and 15 years.
So now they're just getting that on a yearly basis.
It's more of a true police matrix. I mean, for a long time, we never even did a police matrix, really, until we started doing longevity. I mean, most departments have always done some sort of matrix where every year you would step up, and we started this and thought, because the whole idea was to encourage, well, people to stay and to reward people who had stayed. And so now this, I think we're finding that we, in order to be able to recruit, why, we need to start this sooner and reward every year.
I think with the 13 applications for the deputy squad, kind of dealt with.
It's really the same dollars, it's just spreading them a little different way. And I think, please, and I won't speak for him, but I think you're supportive of this, and.
Yes.
So that's what it does. It's just kind of a reallocation, I guess you would say.
Yeah, I think that was my point, is that we're really not.
No, there's a small fiscal impact.
I mean, there might be a tiny bit, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, there's just how we're doing it. $700 is more, I mean, in five years, that's $3,500, and they were at three. So, I mean, there is an increase, small. The five, for the first five years, there's certainly a fiscal increase to it, because nobody got it until they got five. But.
I think if we're going to be able to recruit younger, newer people, and why we're really going to do this. To get them to stay.
That's a important part.
Make the motion to approve that. 2024-03. 2024-03.
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Okay, so we just adopted that. Now, we have a one-off we need to deal with now. We have one deputy who, the prior administration in the, with the best we can tell, in the auditor's office, gave him credit for part-time service in the county. That resolution, and as I've discussed with, I think, basically all of you at this point, does not give credit for part-time service. It never did before. The civilian one does, but the deputy one does not. That individual, if changed to this, will go backwards to the tune of about $1,700 a year. It's not his fault. He didn't cause that, he didn't do anything wrong, and we were not intending for people to go backwards with this. So I would make the proposal that this individual will stay at his $5,000 level until the new resolution would put him in excess of that, and that he will be moved to the new plan and move forward from there.
So I need to make it clear that the previous auditor's office, previous auditor, this was the one who made an error or whatever.
Yeah, whatever happened. And, but he has been getting credit for a number of years of part-time service that are not in the resolutions, and were not in it before. But I also don't think it's right that he should have to go backwards to be done this.
Couldn't be backwards, he wasn't, he didn't lie about something.
He didn't lie, no, 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 it's, he didn't make it up. I mean, it's, he.
Only fair believing where he's at.
At least until he catches up, and then he goes on up with everybody else.
Does he still work for us?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. So I will make that motion, and we will codify that in our amendments, that this individual, the payroll department and the sheriff know who the individual is, I'm just protecting the innocent here. Will stay at 5,000, and then we'll move up when he's met that number.
Good luck with that. Motion. All right, all right, you guys work it out. Okay, all in favor? Good.
Okay, next one's resolution 2024-04. This is the Training Stipends Revision Resolution. I will read these off, because we added some, and we've all been through this, so it's nothing new. But sworn deputy that has successfully graduated from the academy will receive a stipend in the amount of $2,000 per year. This will be limited to 10 positions, so there will be no more than 10 of those granted. Sworn deputy that has successfully completed training form and been certified as a drone operator will receive $2,000 per year, and that will be one position. Deputy that has successfully completed training form and certified as a field training officer would be awarded a stipend in the amount of $2,000, would be limited to five positions. Deputy that has successfully completed training form and been certified as a firearms instructor would be, will receive $2,000 per year, that is one position. Sworn deputy that has successfully completed training form and been certified as an EVOC instructor will be $2,000 per year, and that is one position. Deputy that has successfully completed training form and certified as a taser instructor would be, or instructor, excuse me, would be awarded a stipend in the amount of $2,000 per year, that is one position. K-9 officer would be $2,000 per year, that is limited to two positions. Animal control officer would be in the amount of $2,000 per year, that would be limited to one position. Public information officer, the amount of $2,000 per year, that is one position. Night shift duty would be $2,000 per year, that would be limited to two positions. And midship duty would be $1,000 per year, and that is two positions. There is no limit to the number that any individual can earn, albeit the discretion of the sheriff, how they are distributed and achieved. Sheriff will provide the payroll department a report showing who gets what, and it will be included as part of the bi-weekly payroll schedule and applied equally across pay periods. This will begin January 1st, 2025, and will be, they shall begin receiving the stipends with the first payroll of 2025. Once you're eligible, you're eligible. It would be prorated from that point for the rest of that year. If they discontinue certification, then you lose it right then. So it would, you would have gotten the prorated amount up to the point where you lost it. They shall continue to receive the stipend until they are no longer eligible. This replaces Park County Resolution 2020-18. The fiscal impact of that is $25,000, from $23,052. I said $25,000, didn't I? Can't do math, it's $29,000, isn't it?
You're a little slow with the.
I know that, no.
Questions, or not? Motion's been made, seconded to adopt the resolution, all in favor?
Good. We'll have one miscellaneous when we're, you're done with, down to that one.
Okay, we do have the solid waste commitment, it was included in the budget, so we nearly need to give grant meeting permission to sign on behalf of the council. Motion?
Motion.
Seconded. All in favor? Is this the one you want, or you have the original?
I have it.
Okay, just put it in the file and I'll sign it when we're done, yeah. Okay, that's done. What else do you have? Do you have something else?
I do have one thing for the, for information and a request of signatures. Cindy Todd and I have met a couple times with mainstream fiber. They're a fiber supplier based and headquartered out of Nashville, Indiana and Brown County. They are pursuing the possibility of applying for grant funding from, well, it's the BEAD program, which essentially is the transportation bill. They have identified many parcels in Park County that would be eligible, and they're going after it. Their letter of proposal is 321 miles of fiber and 4,220 passings that they are proposing. They are asking for nothing from us other than, they asked for input on the map that they had put together and for a letter of support from the, from various entities in the county. So I have that letter with me. If you wouldn't mind, we can handle this after the meeting, reading it. If you want to read it, sign it, so we can submit that on their behalf or to them for their, for their application. Like I said, there is no request for funding, no request for anything from county government, and they are, they have done a lot of work down in there. They get a full county project in Benton County where they completely served all of Benton County. They have several southern Indiana counties. They are also working on this with Vermillion County, and I don't know who all else, but it's an exciting opportunity. It's a smaller company that, that, I mean, we're not on the hook for anything.
Now, were they string lines like...
I didn't ask them how they were going to do it, Tom, if they were going to hang it or bury it. Probably should have, just out of curiosity, but I did not ask them.
Is it a certain part of the county or...
Well, they've got to go back and redo because when they brought it to us, they had hit all the areas that Ardoff is hitting, which is Spectrum's project, which the northeast corner of the county, or quarter is a big part of that. There's other parts of the county that are getting covered by that. But there are plenty of those Ardoff blocks that they got returned because the bidder defaulted, and that is really a big deal in the southern part of the county. And the area in north, kind of, for lack of a better way to say this, between Rosedale and Rockville and a big part of that center area down there, they have that all drawn in to do. They will probably pull some of this out of the northern part that is already done by Spectrum, but some of it they may actually leave in, they said. It's kind of a whole countywide thing. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of empty space in the Bloomingdale area, too, because that's done, that they done, they have encroached in it in various different places, but I haven't seen a final map.
Yeah, I guess it'd be nice if they would be sure that we cover those areas that's not already covered by Spectrum and Bloomingdale in some way.
From my, from my knowledge, and I have several years of doing this, I feel like what I saw Monday, I think is when Cindy and I met with them again, that they are hitting the areas that are not going to be hit by Spectrum, that are already not served by Bloomingdale Home Telephone, that are not already served by Joint, and I'm not talking about their new project, I'm talking about the ones that are already done, or the cable companies or whatever in towns. I feel like they are covering basically everything else. And I say basically because I can't tell you for sure without really going back and digging out in the GIS that on this road, when they, this particular road, when they come half, and mark it halfway down, is there actually anybody to the rest of the direction? There are some cases where you see them come down a road at halfway and stop. But if there's nobody in the rest of that, there's no reason to go there. If there's no light poles, no nothing there, there's nothing, I can give you an example of that in my own case, but it's a very ambitious project, probably, 321 miles and 4,220 passings in this county is a lot.
Come on, four.
Anyway, if, I'll have that for our signature pile if you wouldn't mind signing them.
So you need a motion to approve that or nothing?
No, it's just informational, yes.
Okay, anything else with that, or do you have?
I know, I think I've had everything I wanted to get done today.
There's a letter from the attorney in the pile, but...
Yeah, they have it, so. We sought the opinion of the attorney regarding the situation, and you guys have that letter?
Well, Marianne, this is your last council meeting. First, we want to take the time to thank you for all you've done, not only as auditor, but prior, your prior service in the treasurer's office, and we appreciate you a lot, and you've taken that office and turned it back around, and we, it's been a pleasure to work with you. It's been great. And council, we have a card here for you, and there's a little something in the card that we wanted to give you as a token of our appreciation for...
Thank you.
...your service to Park County, and so congratulations, enjoy your retirement.
I'm going to.
Sounds like it, and we talked before the meeting, and it sounds like you have great plans, so we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marianne.
It's been fun, and if I was younger, I'd stay.
Always old as you think.
I'm starting to feel old.
It happens to us, it happens to all, happens to the best, so, but thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're...
Don't wave until you sign off.
Yeah, we have a lot to sign, so please hold it off.
And then you put most of, yeah, we set large the cash, we said.
Yeah, we've got some collection of funds.
We've got some collection of funds, too, amongst ourselves, that we've got to do to ourselves.
John Wissman's due.
Okay, all right.
So we need a motion to adjourn, so we...
Motion to adjourn.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.